A little after seven and everybody's really quiet, so I'll call this meeting of the Silverton Falls School Board to order. Thank you everyone for coming tonight. Please note attendance Denise. We have a special treat tonight. I always look forward to the October meeting because the choral players from the high school are here tonight and they're gonna sing the National Anthem for us and one other song. So Mark, do you want to give them, get them in here? They're under the direction of Jennifer Kircher but she's not here tonight, so Evan Merklin's gonna be the kind of takeover. Introduce their songs and things like that, so. Welcome you guys. And this is in lieu of our flag salute, so everybody please stand and they're gonna sing the National Anthem for us.
Next we're gonna sing a song from South Water.
Thank you very, very much. You sounded really good. Appreciate it. Thank you guys. Okay, we have a few items on our consent agenda tonight. Is there a motion for approval?
Move for approval?
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded to approve our consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Student reps Elijah and Courtney. Good to have you guys again tonight.
So, I'm Elijah Nielsen again and a little update on the Silverton High School sports. Football, uh, well, Fox's varsity football is dominating so far with a record of 6-0. The next Friday night whites will take place away at Central High School this coming Friday, October 17th. For cross-country, the next meet will be taking place on Wednesday the 14th at Leavenin High School. The boys team is second in districts and the girls team is third in districts. All of our varsity PR at the last meet sadly on October 10th. Both teams in position to go to state. Girls soccer with a 2, 1, and 5 record, um, they're having a very solid season. Conference started on October 7th with Leavenin. They are 2-0 so far in the conference and the next match will be at home against Central High School on the 14th. Boys soccer, the boys are playing their hearts out, truly an enjoyment to watch coming from personal experience. They're 0-8 and like the girls conference started on the 7th with Leavenin. They play Central High School also on the 14th but at their house. With volleyball, volleyball's team is cruising with a 3-7 record. Only four games left, four league games left. Their previous game was against Corvallis and the next game will take place at South Almond on the 14th of October. Who else can you count to pump up, pump up the SHS student body? The cheer team is perfecting their practice and performing at the games. All of our fall SHS sports teams are performing amazingly. On behalf of the whole entire student body, we'd love to see each and every one of you at one of, if not all, the next upcoming games or matches for each sport if you haven't done so already. That's it for sports. Thank you.
So I'm Courtney Roth and I have the clubs report. So ASB led by Johnny Farah is working on planning the annual coin drive which takes place from November 3rd to the 7th. The coin drive raises money for the Tree of Giving which is an organization that gathers Christmas gifts for children in need who wouldn't normally receive them. The National Honor Society run by Chrissy Arnall had its induction ceremony for the new members last Tuesday and they participated in the Saka food drive on Saturday. The Interact Club led by John Mannion is planning a canned food drive for Saka which will be happening from October 20th through the 29th. The Key Club run by Megan Miller will be doing a fundraiser called Trick or Treat for UNICEF on Halloween. They'll be going door to door asking for donations and the money they raise will provide tennis shots for mothers in third world countries. FBLA led by Trish Conlon has their first all-member meeting this Wednesday and their first fundraising event for the Elks Lodge will be held on October 25th. Their goal this year is to reach 100 members and take 50 members to the FBLA State Business Leadership Conference. Los Agulres led by Monica Hanson will be making masks this week to celebrate the Mexican holiday Dia de Muertos or Day of the Dead. The Speech and Debate Team run by Katie Cantrowitz had a tournament this past weekend that was held at the high school and has another tournament this coming weekend on the 17th and 18th. The Gay Straight Alliance also run by Katie Cantrowitz have just begun meeting and are off to a great start. The Red Cross Club led by Kirsten Barnes will be holding a blood drive on November 20th. Also, the club members are going to elementary schools and doing preparedness presentations. These presentations are part of the Red Cross's Pillowcase Project which helps kids be more prepared for emergency situations. FFA run by Sarah MacArthur and Scott Towery are having an alumni auction on November 13th. The group will also be taking a trip to Bowman Farms on October 25th. The Auto Club led by Butch Setson held a car detailing and oil changing event last Friday which was very successful. The Robotics Club also over the weekend, they teamed up with the Hotwire Robotics Group and competed at Girls Generation and the Rookie Rumble which were both held at Catlin and Gable School. The Theater run by Doug Osterhau are preparing for their production of To Kill a Mockingbird which will premiere on November 20th and show through the 22nd. Also, they are putting on a haunted house on the 24th, 25th, and 31st of October that will be held in the high school. The Band run by Frank Petrick will be having their fall concert on October 29th. Additionally, the marching band has been working very hard and they performed for the first time at last Thursday's football game. Finally, the Choir run by Jennifer Kircher is preparing for their fall concert which is on the 22nd of October. And that is all I have for clubs.
Great. Any questions for these guys?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good report tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to open it up for our first audience with visitors. Would anyone like to address the board tonight? Please come in, please come sign in Dane, or sign in and then state your name. Also, before you get started Dane, I'd just like to repeat as always, try to keep your comments to five minutes or under so everybody, everyone has a chance to speak and we'll go from there, so.
I'm Dane Smith, 514 Southwater, and I was just gonna give you a follow-up on the, uh, the high school report for the robotics team. I took about half of my Mark Twain robotics team to watch the Girls Generation on Saturday and those, those girls were, after the, um, match play, they were ranked fifth which qualified them for the championship play and they ended up being in the, uh, first place alliance for the tournament, so.
Cool. Nice.
Silverton High School. And I have nine, nine team members and we start meeting at the pit on Wednesday.
Very cool.
Yes, we're excited.
That, that's a really great program. It's fun to see. Anyone else? We also have a second audience with visitors later in the meeting, but this is a good time to come up if anybody's interested.
Hi, good evening. Gene Pfeifer and I've got several topics tonight. The first one I'd like to cover is we hear so many things that are disparaging about the proposal made by Dahlke Construction that was ratified by Pease Engineering about Eugene Field's rule on how to remediate it. The first number that they had produced was about four and a half million. We had a discussion with District's upper, an upper management person and that was laid out of those things that needed to be added to it. For instance, more for plumbing, uh, refinish some of the playground surfaces, do some other things. Otherwise, it was pretty complete by CSI count, uh, so their figure is less than five million. Also, the, uh, it's a better proposal than the one you receive from your consultants because the consultants only puts, uh, block walls in certain areas to stabilize the buildings, whereas the proposal from Dahlke has a, a wall system all the way around. It's on the inside, it would protect the occupants from failure in the, in light of an earthquake. So it's, it's much, much different. There are new foundations, the foundations extend the sheer walls up tied to the roof diaphragm, all of that's new plywood, new, new roof diaphragm, et cetera. So a jump from that to, uh, the next topic is full disclosure. If you take the bond measure and do some math with it, you find certain things about it. For instance, the report that was given out on, uh, the 21st of, of last month, I think it was, shows that the interest projected by Piper Jaffrey is 19 million. And if you take that 19 million and add it to 24.9 million which is the principal, that total's about 44 million. Take that to find the average divided by 17, uh, that's, uh, about 2.8 or 4.8 or something million per annum. Take that and divide it by what the, the total assessed value is for the whole district which is 1,472 million. And you come up with a rate average of $1.76. Well, the proposal you have, you're trying to say that it's going to be three and that's impossible. It just doesn't work. If you, another math problem is if you take, uh, the interest rate, again proposed by Piper Jaffrey is 4.62 percent, you could go also, you could go to the one that they said in the lower side which is 4.54 and calculate that, multiply it times 24.9 and you'll find that it is short about the amount of money available each year by almost $200,000. So you have a formula that if the rate is set at three, it's impossible to keep the commitment. I heard Andy say it the other day, well, it might vary a percent or two or a dollar, a cent or two. But it, what it takes is $3.12 to make it so that all the interest is paid. So either you have to violate that commitment or you have to pay it where, the way it should be paid, otherwise you end up with a bond cost that's greater than the commitment in the bond issue which says, uh, no more than 24.9 million. So if, I, I feel that if you were buying a, or if you're getting a loan from a bank, you wouldn't want the bank to say, well, the interest rate is 4.62, but then they give you, well, the rate's gonna be so much a month and you find out at the end that you end up paying eight percent on the equivalent. So this is, this $8 million is a significant number. The other issue is about later, I heard from good sources within the, the school administration that the building is being talked about torn down whether the measure passes or not and am I just gonna be here to say representing many people that that's not in the cards? Don't do it. Gets all in trouble. So, uh, we need to look at things, we need to work with each other. I don't know what's gonna happen on the bond measure, neither do you, but whatever happens, we need to take a look at it and not just, because it doesn't go through, then say, okay, let's tear it down now. That's not appropriate. Uh, the, uh, I want to emphasize again, going back to the disclosure, the first 12 years, we don't tell the people, but literally is that we don't pay anything on principle and that's the reason it's cost so much. The last five years have to be what is a normal declining, uh, amortization payment. Normally that would go from the beginning of the 17-year period all the way down to nothing. So you'd have a project graph that'd look more like this, 25 million down to nothing. Well, right now it goes across and then you have to pay all the principal in the last five years. That's why it's cost so much because we're making an extra profit for the bond company. So the bond company.
Thirty seconds Gene.
Your consultants have a dog in this race.
Gene, 30 seconds.
I mean.
Thirty.
Thank you. And the architect and the consultants are getting 2.1 million out of this, this thing and they certainly have a, a horse in the race too. There's been criticism in the paper of me saying that, well, we're too cheap or something, that the proposal with Dahlke was 7% or something, not for, for the architectural. Well, that architectural, what I just defined there is 12% and it's not necessary. People like Pease and, uh, local architects are satisfied of lower rates, they don't charge so much per hour. These are serious things that we need to take a look at to be fiscally responsible with our constituents. So please, you need to take a look at this and, and a disclosure needs to come forth in a rather soon period of time so you don't forfeit the vote by leaving it set.
Okay. Thank you Gene.
Any questions?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Just a couple of comments about, um, some of Mr. Pfeifer's, um, comments that he made. Um, the bond structures and things like that are very, they're very complicated thing. That's why the district goes to the experts, um, Seattle Northwest up in, out of Portland and Seattle. That's why we go, that's why we use them. They're, they're experts in these fields. Um, the, one of the, the proposal that Mr. Pfeifer was talking about is something that we abandoned along, at the, at the beginning because it throws a lot of the cost on the, on the current property owners with a high rate and then the rate drops down towards the end of the bond. And guys, correct me if I'm misspeaking on any, I know some of this stuff too. But, um, and it drops down when you could have a lot of new property owners at the end of the bond who aren't, you know, paying what the people did at the beginning.
Well, I think traditionally we've had about a 4% growth over the last several years and that, that wasn't factored into Mr. Pfeifer's, um, formula as well and that is factored into the modeling from Piper Jaffrey. Also their modeling shows that we'll begin paying principal in the second year.
Yeah. I wanted to point that out also.
How much, how much principal would we be paying in those second years? I guess I'm part of the bond structure that always bothered me and it was, same thing Gene was getting at is that the first 12 years, it's just a small payment. So in, in those first 12 years, how much principal and how much interest are we paying? And, and is this a standard, I mean, are we paying, are we paying principal and interest in, in the same way that say, a homeowner would repay a mortgage? You know, it's, it's not, the interest isn't weighted, isn't held off till the end or nothing. It's just, is it, is it, is the structure like a standard one that, that, that most anybody would understand?
Most, most home loans are amortized out over a lot longer period of time than that, so they actually carry more interest. Most homeowners have a 30-year mortgage and so in fact they pay more interest. Now, it's amortized out over a steady period, but that doesn't mean that it's still not back-end weighted and actually much more so than in a 17-year, uh, loan. You know, even if, even if you are paying, uh, less interest, or excuse me, less principal upfront, it's still, if you look at it in total compared to a home loan, it's, uh, it doesn't even really compare, we're paying much faster.
Yeah, and the goal of the board in all this was to keep the, keep the cost down for property owners. And like we always said, we have a 4% growth that, that drops the bond, the bond dollars per thousand rate even more as the bond matures, you know, as the bond goes on through its life. But the, uh, the main, the main reason, one of the main reasons we structured this was to keep the bond, keep the rate down for, for property owners.
I guess one more thing I'd like to point out, these are just estimates, but the, the estimates we've been given in the past on previous bonds have actually come in lower than the estimates, so that's been the track record.
I want to comment on one other thing of the full disclosure. Um, I think from the beginning of this bond measure, the board has tried really hard to get out to the public. We've asked to have meetings, we've had surveys, we've asked for input, we've done lots and lots of research on this, you know. So to say that there hasn't been full disclosure, um, I just want to point out what we have done and that, you know, we're accessible, we've been part of it and we've asked for input and if you want to know information, there's a lot of resources out there besides us even, on the internet and the paper. And so that, that part I do take some offense to because we really, that's been a big goal in this bond.
Everything is on the website. Everything has been in the papers. There's, um, mailings, there's been nothing but, but full information going out there all the time if people, if people are seeking it out.
Any other comments before we, Andy, did you have something you wanted?
Tom asked a couple of questions. I, I want to be certain too, and I have some of that information tonight Tom and I, I don't have it entirely, but I, I, I will tell you that, that, that the principal, well, first of all, I'm gonna back up and I'm gonna highlight what Wally said, that we have to operate in a, in a world of estimates. The bonds aren't sold and they won't be sold until at least three months after the election typically. It could be four months, it could be two and a half, nobody really knows. It all, it all depends upon what variables are at that time. But based upon the estimates that we have, uh, over a 17-year bond, uh, the first principal payment would be in the second year after the bonds are sold. That'd be approximately $250,000 and I'm just going by memory right now Tom. Uh, and the, uh, the interest in the same year would be just under a million dollars. And, and what happens is over the course of 17 years, uh, that ratio actually reverses itself. So I believe it's around year 12, uh, the principal, uh, payment is around 6 million, the interest, again, I'm going off memory right now, uh, is, uh, interest is around two or three million in that range somewhere. And again, I have that documentation and can take a look at that based upon the estimates, based upon the anticipated, uh, estimated anticipated interest rate that we'll be paying on the bond, based upon all of the estimates that come into play. And I think it's real important to note, while, while I have all the respect in the world for Mr. Pfeifer doing some math related to, uh, just the, the plain figures and doing that simple amortization over a number of years, what I believe is the case, and I can't guarantee it, but what I believe is the case is that he has not taken into account the assessed value growth in this school district expected over the next 10 years which is budgeted to be between 2 and a 2.5 percent. And while the year's spot on, it was 4.5 percent, uh, assessed value growth in this district over the last 10 years. So when you think in terms of budgeting and estimates, we're, we're, we're on the conservative side. You literally are anticipating a rate that uses a 2% differential in assessed value growth over the course of the next 17 years, uh, to, to be able to maintain this, this $3 rate. In addition, Mr. Pfeifer has not considered that the collection rate, you as a public entity are required to consider the collection rate and the, literally the delinquencies that come from people not paying all of their taxes, we, you have a responsibility to help address that and that wasn't considered into his formula as well. There are quite a few variables that go into the, the estimates and, and as a result, that's why we hire qualified people in order to make these recommendations to you. That's why you do your homework. Julie, I agree, you're spot on, you do your homework, you come up with the estimate that you believe in the best interests of this district and are accurate and your previous history with Piper Jaffrey and Seattle Northwest demonstrates that the estimates are accurate when they come true. I expect that to be the case this time. Again, that's my best estimate based upon the information I know at this time.
Anything else before we go to, we're still in audience with visitors.
I guess I would just encourage all of our visitors and patrons and if we talk, talk with people to not accept the straw man premises that are thrown out by a number of people. I've seen pamphlets with a lot of statements that will say things like, "The average rate is," therefore the school board has lied to us in saying it's $3. Again, that's, to me, that's setting up a premise. We've never said that the average rate is. I think it's important to be clear what, what we actually are saying, what, what, um, the information we put out there is accurate. Like you said, it's estimated based on the best estimates and the best professionals we can hire, but there is a lot of propaganda going around trying, I think, I don't know, trying to confuse, but it is confusing when you see people mixing apples and oranges in arguments and, and playing it off as we've said one thing, but it's, look, it's obviously not true because simple math proves it's not true. We haven't said that $3 is the average rate. We said it's the actual tax rate predicted per thousand over that period of time. It's a big difference and it's not, I don't see where it's deceptive unless you take a, a figure like an average and try and compare and say, look, they lied to us or something. So I think if we can point out those things and the public can be aware of that, I could try to do that the best we can.
I'd like to address the comments about the scope as well. The, uh, scope that was, that Mr. Pfeifer's referring to was incomplete. There, there, I don't have it here in front of me, but there are many line items that were said to be done by owner. That's just additional cost that goes on to the project. They talked about the new foundation. There's some assumptions in that, in that estimate that stated some work had to be done underneath the building. You cannot physically go underneath the building as is, there'd be a lot of excavation work and need be done to, to take care of that. Also, I think plumbing was mentioned and in that estimate I believe, uh, new fixtures were included, but, but no repiping and, and none of that work. In addition, there's gonna, we, if we did that kind, extensive type of work, there'd be some off-site improvements that'd be required by the, the county and the city and that was not figured in as well.
Okay. We're still in audience with visitors. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Hello.
Did we lose our sign-in sheet? Gene? Gene, did you happen to take the sign-in sheet with you? Thanks.
Jessica B. 909 Travis. I would like to first start off by saying how much I love living in Silverton. I feel that we all treat each other as neighbors, we're cordial to each other. But with that said, there's some neighbors here who are better than others. One neighbor, for example, Gene Pfeifer, one of the biggest opponents of the school board, bond included. I did some research on him and I found that Gene is actually chairman of the Silverton Dam Awareness Program. He has a website, www.97381.com/ dam, in which he clearly states that in the event of an earthquake, which he says is very likely to happen, Eugene Field would be submerged underwater. To be precise from his website, he's that the dam broke. Why would this same man encourage the community to remodel Eugene Field, knowing that if the dam broke, it would submerge Eugene Field? Furthermore, I looked at the contractors' board to see what it said about Jean Pfeiffer. It says that his license was refused, and that he's been fined for engaging in dishonest and fraudulent conduct as a contractor. I think it's time that we start listening to other neighbors in this town. Furthermore-
I object to what you're talking about, you need to listen, you should object to it too.
Jean?
It's in the Court of Appeals-
Jean, excuse me, I'll give you, I'll give you a minute to rebut anything that said, I'll give you a minute, well, after everybody's done, I'll give you a minute, a minute or two at the end, okay?
Furthermore, Jean circulates documentation from Dalk Construction, specifically a letter from James, I'm not sure if I'm saying his last name correctly, Schies, S-C-H-I-E-S-S, in which he prepared a proposal for Jean for remodeling Eugene Field. It was later discussed in an Our Town article, April of this year, to be precise, that BLRB architect estimated that it would actually cost $10.68 million to remodel Eugene Field, unlike the $4 to $6 million that continuously changes per Jean Pfeiffer. Bob Collins, and Daisy Pan, and Zach Stokes also went on to review Pfeiffer's claims and found them to be inaccurate. Schies then went on to say that the estimate was between what Pfeiffer said and what BLRB projected. Schies was quoted as saying that the, what community, that what the community members needed to understand is that the cost could not be determined until there is a defined scope of what needs to be done in the building. I believe that Jean is circulating propaganda to railroad this bond, and it needs to stop. You as a board have already voted to discontinue use of Eugene Field. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. And let's, let's do be a little careful on how personal we get with some things, okay? I mean, it's audience with visitors, anything can be brought out, but let's do, let's do be a little respectful and a little bit careful, okay? So just throwing that out there. But, you know, factual information is very important also, so. Would anyone else like to address the board? Chris.
It seems like every time I come up here, I'm thanking you, and it's funny. I'm thanking you guys this time for a lot different reasons, and it's my education, things like level debt. Last month, I couldn't have understood level debt or general obligation bonds. I called my trusted mortgage broker, who's done four mortgages for me personally, and asked him about these things, and it, kind of, take it as hearsay because that's exactly what it is, I'm not an expert. I simply followed my own level of facts and found that it's factual. You guys have done exactly what you said you were going to do, that we were able to go online, find all of the information, work that out, as an expert in loans. Thank you. It was as the interest exactly, it's the interest, we calculated the interest on my own house, and I was shocked, one, because I wasn't as informed as I probably should have been, I would have been scared off at that time, for sure, but I'm just now, 10 years in, getting to where my interest or my principal payment is, feels like I'm paying on it now, and so that as those numbers have crossed, as the interest has come down, and the principal has come up, the ratio has flipped, or at least equaling out, especially as I'm getting ready to put my house on the market, it's been very, very interesting. To the conversations and research I've done with Piper Jaffrey, and how close they've hit in the past for you, with the conservative, and that word has been thrown out a lot, the conservative estimates and the conservative lives, and it follows true, and just because we are trying for 24.9 million to better our schools, to better our levels of education, to better the places where we send our children, it's pretty incredible, and it's still conservative. It's still 24.9 million, it's still interest, it's still everything. The disclosure, I double-check you, I do, and I have yet to come across a point where I'm like, I couldn't find that information quickly and easily and publicly, and want to thank you for that, want to thank everybody who's worked on that, and, and the abilities and the connections that I've been able to make through that. The information that's out there, if you choose to pursue it, it's there. As somebody who reads a lot of publicly bid projects and understand the laws behind defined scope of work, it's incredible to do group walkthroughs for a project that's $6,000 and above. I have to call out a minimum of three contractors to walk through, and it is illegal for me not to do that. If, if I don't do it, then it has to be written down, so everybody has exactly the same information. You guys have been consistent, so as I've been to a lot of meetings lately, I want to thank you guys for that also, that nothing has changed, you guys have stuck exactly to what's happened, exactly what you said you'd do, so. I think that's the main majority of what I wanted to bring up.
Okay, any questions? Great, thank you, Chris. Anyone else?
John. Yes, my name is John Mannion, I live at 490 Edgewood Drive in Silverton, I'm, I'm, no, I've been to a lot of meetings, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into getting us kind of to the doorstep of this momentous event here. I think this is a big moment for the young people, for the educators in town, and I, and as others have said, I thank you for all your efforts, I know it's not been easy, I know elections are not easy, I know that, you know, the fact we can sit here and have these discussions and people get a chance to vote, I mean, that's kind of the beauty of kind of where we live. I also know that when it comes to financial decisions for many families on a fixed income, you know, I'm not ever going to judge anybody on how they vote on something, I know it's a personal choice that we all respect each other's opinions to make. I would just say, as we get into the home stretch of this, that we need to be positive, we need to, we need to, we need to get this done, and I think that when people make comments and say things that confuse the issue, that, that's, that's where I kind of have a problem. Everybody's entitled to their opinion, but no one's opinion is fact, and I, I know that you were just kind of scolded on full disclosure a little bit. I think you've, you could not have been more transparent from day one, for the past year and a half, I think it is now. I also think that you've done a great job of saying, we're, this is not, this is not a frivolous project, this is a needed project. So when I hear Mr. Pfeiffer say, discuss full disclosure, I find it a little ironic, because in the last election, and this is not meant to pile on, this is just meant, when someone poaches you in the eye, we need to get it out there. In the last election, he was cited, and I believe fined, for not following the rules. I just read in the paper that there's another investigation underway this time around for not following the rules. So either one of two things is happening here, either one, you're not smart enough to follow the rules, or number two, you are, and you're a cheater. So this is not a personal thing, this is, let's do right by the kids, because the sad thing, I've seen signs, save old schools. I'm pretty darn sure that no one with those signs in their yard are of school age. They're not going into that dilapidated building, they're not having to teach in that dilapidated building, unsafe, kids are getting sick, you know, I, I have the utmost respect for the educators that go in there every day and bust their butt and do a great job for us, for our young people. This, this has to get done, I think, we've been here, my family's been here, this is our fifth year, we are all in on this community, but I've got to have faith that they're going to say yes. Silverton is a, is a great place to raise kids, I've heard that over and over again, we have to get the positive message out, we have to let it be known that these other erroneous facts are just there to confuse people, you got to get people, good quality people that want to get this done, it has to happen, and I thank you for your efforts, and I, and I thank you for continuing to put out the facts. You've been unbiased from the beginning, you've just laid it out there for everybody, and, and I really hope, and I, and I think that, you know, this is a big moment, and we've got to get this thing done, and I, and I really hope that this happens, and then next month, you're on to the next stage of what this is going to look like, because it's been a long process. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, Jean, you can have one minute, I said I'd give you one minute to-
I'm not sure, yes, and I want to read the Dalky's letter.
No, one minute, Jean.
Okay, this is from Dalky. "Wally, thank you for your call earlier this month to discuss the possible renovation of Eugene Field School and Elementary School. Since our first visit, I have had more time to review the budget presented to you from Jean Pfeiffer, and I also was able to inspect the site last week to review existing conditions. I have not been present at any of the board meetings, do I know the full intent or interest of the district, but in review of both budgets, one prepared by Jean Pfeiffer and the other prepared by the consulting architects, I believe the former budget is much more detailed and comprehensive and more in line with the costs than I would budget for this type of project. As I mentioned in our conversation, Jean and I worked for several months on the initial budgeting for the renovation of Courthouse Square Building in Salem, and our budgets are in line with actual costs for the completion of the project and less than 50% of the cost of the initial consultant's budget."
30 seconds.
"If the budget would support, Dalky Construction would be very interested in preparing a proposal, unless they design a build project with not exceed price of 4.5 million, it would address the areas outlined in Jean's proposal. I believe this work can be completed in two stages, over two summers, with a limited description of the school during the school year. In addition, there is a need for additional space, there appear allowable space in a north existing school, near some pads, it would allow for a footprint of approximately 5,000 square feet. A basement and a main level addition to house classroom foyer and lunchroom for budgeting purposes, addition can be completed for $1.5 million."
Okay, Jean, that's, one minute's up, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, did you have something real quick?
No, I'll wait till the next session.
Okay, thanks. Okay, just along those lines too, the district had our own ZCS engineering and KPFF architects, architects to do an extensive, extensive work, look at Eugene Field, and they went through that building, spent a couple days in there, at least, and they, they came up with a figure of between 10.9 and 14.7 million to, and they did a lot more work in that building than, well, the letter itself said they hadn't, Dalky hadn't even been to the building, so that says a lot right there in my mind, so I just wanted to get that out there. Okay, if no one else would like to address the board, like I said, we have a second audience with visitors, we're going to move on to discussion items, we have the second reading on some policies, we'll just run through these one by one, if anybody has anything on any of them, please speak up. GBNA, hazing, harassment, intimidation, bullying, menacing, cyberbullying, staff. Anything? Okay, GCAB, personal electronic devices and social media, staff also. Okay, JFCEB, personal electronic devices and social media. Okay, we have some new policies, these are the first readings, and we'll go through these the same way. EEACA, school bus driver examination and training. 2-2A, selection of instructional materials, I guess that's II-IIA, selection of instructional materials.
I have a question or comment on that, on the first big block there says recommend industrial instructional materials be free from racial, national origin, religious, disability, and so on. The line right before that says materials shall be representative of various religious, ethnic, and cultural groups. Doesn't that contradict?
The, the line before is your existing language, Wally, and the, the paragraph afterward is, is related to federal law specific to anti-discrimination. So when I read it, I didn't interpret it the same, I think the intent of the sentence was to be certain that there were a variety of perspectives considered where the additional paragraph states law specific to non-discrimination. That, that's my interpretation.
Yeah, I think we're reading it like that, when you take that blue part out, I think there's a, there, as you just read it on face value, and there's a contradiction there. I think what you said is probably the intent, we may want to do some wordsmithing there to make that clear.
Well, one problem is this sentence really isn't actually a sentence. It's missing, it's missing a word, and so it's got this whole list separated by commas, and it has the word bias, and I think it meant to, I think it meant to say bias at the end of all those, because what you've got is lift, it just said it's going to be free of racial, and then it doesn't have any racial what, and it should say bias probably at the end of the word orientation, because otherwise it's just a run-on, I think, or, I'm not a Chmerian, but something, something bad.
So in cases like this, I'll do a little bit more research and find out if this is in statute or not, because sometimes it is in statute, and if that's the way it is in statute, we have a tough time changing that, but if it's not in statute, we can sure look at some ways of clarifying that a little bit, Wally, I hear you asking or suggesting, you know, intent or purpose for this, rather than some language that might be a little confusing, it sounds like, okay, we'll look into that.
Anything else on that one? Okay, IK, academic achievement. And J-
Well, I do have, have a question on that one, on number one, we've crossed out to meet or exceed grade level. Is there any reason why we can't keep that and just say to meet and exceed grade level and achieving the academic content standards and so on? I think grade level's important.
I, I know that the language was developed as a result of House Bill 2220 in the last legislative session specifically, specific to student achievement based upon standards, and so I, I believe that the, again, the intent was that the, that if grade level is determined by other than standards, then, then there's some room for misinterpretation. In other words, as we've discussed in the past, grades that are based upon behavioral things like attention in class and tardiness and so forth, we, we essentially not, not allowed to provide that as, as grading options anymore, so I think the intent here is to be certain that we're clear about standards. We can look into that and see if there's an option for that, Linda may have some insight on that because I know she's specific to curriculum, but we can surely look into that, Wally.
Part A does bring grade level into it, to meet or exceed the academic content standards that the students current grade level-
Good, good point, no, you're right.
If that helps at all, I don't-
Okay, yeah, that's helpful.
That added part. And lastly, JGAB, use of restraint and seclusion, again, first reading, anything on this one? Okay.
Good info, thank you.
Our third discussion item, and this is just an opportunity for the board to discuss this a little bit more if we feel like we need to- this a little bit more if we feel like we need to. Use of construction manager, general contractor, if the spawn should pass, or excuse me, when the spawn passes. Exemption from competitive bidding as per policy, DJC. We're putting, Andy put this in because we have to, this has to be published. I believe it already has been. We have to have a public hearing on it, which we're going to have at our next work session in October, this month, and it'll be an action item there also. So Andy, chime in here anywhere you feel like we need to, but this is just an opportunity for us to discuss that a little bit more.
Yes, it's a discussion item for you and you are required by law to provide public notice for an exemption in this case to competitive bidding. And as you heard from, from your program managers of day CPM, they, they described the CMGC option for you. And what I can share with you, and it's really, I think, very clear in the findings, the fact that you see here, and for the public, there's a copy of this on the, on the district, on the district website as well. But the findings of fact are, are, I think, pretty clear that when you have the complexity of a project that you have in front of you that involves combination of demolition and, and remodeling and disruption of an existing school and a variety of other factors, onsite and offsite improvements and others, it's really important that you move ahead in a team fashion. And as a result, the CMGC option is really the one that I believe, and I've recommended to you, that be considered for procurement specifically to the, to the contractor for this job. And as such, you have an opportunity to share that interest with the public, to seek public input. There'll be a public hearing on the 27th to discuss the finding of facts and then for you to take action as you've described, Tim. So I believe it's an appropriate recommendation and ask for your consideration.
I did have a question on some of, on, I noticed in referring to the findings of fact and the resolution, it, it only talks about, or it talks about making Schle, you know, the construction project to make Schleter into a middle school, but it doesn't talk about the Robert Frost part of this. Do we need to include that in, in the findings of fact or is that something that's going to be separate or, or did I miss it somewhere?
The, the CMGC consideration is specific to the Schleter campus, that you'll, you'll have the option of being able to move ahead with, with design bid build or low bid specific to Robert Frost.
Okay. Would we have to do a separate one if we wanted to do CMGC on Robert Frost then?
That'd be standard.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And, and that's not a consideration at this time due to the, I think, the more straightforward traditional nature of what would happen at Robert Frost.
Okay, okay.
That's more of a standalone project, so it'd be easier to handle, design, build, build.
Okay. I, I did find an error in reviewing this today though, on, on the bottom of the first page, it says the targeted date of occupancy is August 1st, 2016. That should state 2017. And it says in parentheses, 20 months from project inception.
Okay, any other comments on this? Okay, no other discussion items tonight. So administrator and staff reports. Andy, October 1st enrollment, district strategic visioning.
Sure. You have in front of you a copy of the October 1st enrollment figures across the district. There is, it's, it's almost like you could have replicated last year. I mean, the numbers are very similar with a couple of exceptions where you have some individual student population increases at Buque Creek, at Scott's Mills. Victor Point is remaining relatively flat even though they're at capacity. Most of your schools are at capacity and that's based upon staffing as well as building capacity. And so that's, that's a good thing. The percentage of increase, if you shift to the far right column, it says total, so the total student population within the district boundaries is 3,777 as of October 1st. That's just a fraction of a percent increase from last year at 3,755. But if you go back to 2008 where you had 3644, I mean, clearly there's, in my mind anyway, there's a trend of growth, but it's just a little over 1% over that, over that timeline. So this school district remains fairly static and it has not reached the threshold of about 3,800 kids that you experienced in the late 90s. So unless you have any, any specific questions about this, I, I think it's pretty factual the way it's presented to you. I was pleased when we received the pers rates that were distributed a few weeks ago. These are the 2015 and 17 pers rates. And just for your reference and for the reference of the public, and I think, again, this is an indication of, of a recovering economy. The tier one, tier two rates, which really includes a lot of your veteran employees and employees that, that have been in education for quite a while, will drop from 13.22% to 11.47% beginning in the 15, 16 school year. Your general service rate, which is predominantly your, your newer employees, and I can't tell you the exact number of years, but eight to 10 years anyway, it drops from 11.22 to 6.78. So the many years that we've had with increasing pers percentages has, is finally leveling out and actually dropping a bit. So that's good news for you as a school district because a major portion of your budget each year goes to personnel and of that personnel includes the retirement benefits to your employees. So good news. And then finally, a, a quick update on the visioning plan, and maybe I had those switched, is we, we are rolling that out. I think I shared with you at the last meeting, we have banners ordered, the logo's been finalized, we're looking at new letterhead, a variety of things. Each one of you has a copy of the, of the bound or at least the staple vision document in front of you. That's been distributed to all schools, all administrators. We've sent a copy to each of the budget committee members. Copies are sitting in every real estate office in town. And so we're, we're getting the word out. I just want you to know we're on top of that. And that's it. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Great. Questions for Andy? Okay, Scott, financials?
Well, unfortunately, I sit here in front of you with egg on my face. I have two very nice looking reports sitting on the servers of the Northwest Regional ESD. One that shows our fund balances in a one-page, easy-to-read format and one that summarizes our expenditures through September to budget. About six o'clock tonight, prior to printing these reports, we experienced our second internet blackout. And I feel like a high school student whose dog really did eat his homework. And so I, I don't have those for you tonight. And I'm, I'm very disappointed though, and I take full responsibility for those. I will commit to you to get those to you in the mail first thing tomorrow, as soon as the internet comes up and we can print those off. I can tell you just anecdotally that financially, we're, we're doing well. We always receive our two, two months' worth of state school fund support in the first month of the, of the year in, in July. We just completed our first major payroll in September. The entire staff has been putting in a lot of extra hours getting that up and going. And we've been really working very, very hard. But unfortunately, I don't have any numbers to share with you tonight. So I'll get those to you as soon as I can tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Kathy Frank, Bethany Charter School. Annual report. You're fine, Kathy.
Kathy Frank, 11824, Hazel Street. Here this evening, just to share our annual report, which came across to all. Any questions on that highlighted? We spent our 10th year anniversary last year. Things are going well. We have our ups and downs like any school, not claiming to be anything but a school that's providing caring, enriched academics, not driven by test scores. So we're not one of the highest. We really want to stick to our mission statement, which is science, technology, enriched with arts, music, PE. And you know, that's why people are coming to us, not for anything but. So questions? I'm opening up. I've gotten in trouble for overspeaking because I am a speaker, so I am just going to keep quiet. I, you guys are so patient. I love it. I'm like a hyper person and I'm just like sitting here thinking, oh, you guys are really patient. So any questions for us?
We had the report in our packet. Did any questions come to mind? Kathy, could you go over, and I know there's an answer to the question here, but just for the benefit of the audience and the public, how you guys are addressing the switch to Common Core standards and things like that?
You know, we took it on last year, especially with the math piece, where our math scores are really low this year because we knew it was coming. We're kind of a dump and, jump and drive kind of. So this year I'm deciding not to. I'm waiting for the experts and then we're going to look at curriculum that really can do justice to it because we did the proficiency base. I spent hours with pinnacle grade book trying to get them to understand what we wanted through that. And then House Bill came through and April saying, you don't have to do that. So this year we're just going to try to do what is right for the kids and analyze what's going on this year and then jump. Because, you know, you get this panic mode, panic, panic, panic. And our teachers felt it, I felt it coming in this year, the stress of, we have to do this, that, this. So we're going to just try to go back to old school, reading, writing and arithmetic and provide that where any science, technology, excuse me, science, we are going to use the text as really content-driven as opposed to trying to adopt a new curriculum that will hit it. So I think we're in the right track and we're going to hit and miss. We're going to hit and miss, which Linda's going to figure it out and then we're going to sap into that after it's been figured out because we're just this little entity that is only a choice. And people love knowing that we are enriching through everything else. Does the district like that? No.
Well, I was going to say, are you concerned at all about, I mean, the new state testing coming down the line and how that's going to affect those kids as they...
Well, we piloted.
High school.
We jumped in and piloted that last year and gave it a try. It's going to be tough. I think any school will claim it's going to be tough. But it's new and we have to keep exploring it and we're doing that. We are doing everyday kind of practices on the computer to drag, drag, plot, drive answers, which is really what it's about. It's deeper thinking. I'm just going to testify that it's, it's a tricky world right now. And if we can provide a caring, non-stressful environment for kids right now, it's a key. They, they need to come in and appreciate school as opposed to, because I think the parents already are doing that. I mean, and we, we get questions. So we're doing it in a quiet manner. Is that all right, Tim Rock?
Yeah, yeah, that's all right.
I know.
I know, I know it's very stressful. I like, I like your comments about, you know, trying to keep that level down for the kids.
Yeah, it really is.
But I'm just, you know, we want them to meet standards and do all that too, so.
And we desperately want them to do that. But I think let's try to get it figured out and bring that to the plate to them as they're ready. We're doing it secretively without them. It's, it really is tough for them right now. They're coming in. What, I had the funniest comment today. A teacher commanded one of the third graders to do their math and it's the cutest kid, I mean, really cute. Dad's a city worker in Silverton and he told the teacher, why'd Obama do this to us? You know, it was straight out on the Common Core, which, so I know it's coming in through parents and we're not going to let down, we will not let you down. I mean, but we're not going to be the top of the line. We, we really need the whole piece coming. So please renew us next year because we're on our 10th year. You can decide whether that's the right way, but they're really good kids that we have good people driving that school.
Yeah, okay.
We don't have the comparisons in front of us here, Kathy, but since you are more of a science and math-based school.
Yeah.
How do you compare against other schools in, in math and science?
Well, the trick on the science piece is, is that the board really expected us to be agriculture, which has nothing to do with natural science. So we spent 10 years on the ag piece. Well, it does.
It does.
But in standards that rotate. So we falter in there because we spent a great deal on having agriculture days to implement the mission, which is huge. That mission statement is unbelievably huge for any school to take on. Natural science enriched with technology, excuse me, natural science, technology enriched with art, music, PE. Where's four hours of reading, two hours of math. So we went back, this year we are going back to the agriculture piece and kind of celebrating that, being a part of the Willamette Valley and taking that, because we have kids, graduates that are going into engineering through tractor, what have you. And we're going to find that that's maybe why they're choosing us. Who knows? But for that natural science, excuse me, agriculture piece. Make sense?
Yep.
Yep.
Other questions?
So you never actually get through the full rotation of the science, the rest of districts do on the earth science, like the natural science, physical science?
We do every other year because our double classes are planned, whereas like Central Hall, I taught there many years, you didn't know if you were fifth grade, sixth grade or sixth grade, seventh grade. So we have it on a rotation because we know that that building can only hold 30 children in one class. So one year we do seventh grade standards, the next year we do eighth grade standards. But if someone comes in who misses standard, tough.
Questions, other questions? Okay, thank you, Kathy.
Yes, thank you. Hey, Mr. Valando, my daughter, last born, 15 today. If I escape, will I get any...
Thanks, Kathy.
Okay.
You're free to go. Thank you, Kathy. Dustin, Central Hall and Pratum.
Okay, so I'm here for Central Hall, Pratum, Visioning Strategic Plan and Title I. So for Title I, this year we're receiving $730,771, which is a slight decrease from last year. And so we have our same six funded title schools, Mark Twain, Buque Creek, Robert Frost, Scott's Mills, Silvercrest and Eugene Field. And again, they're all based, all their allocations are based on their free and reduced meal count. And our district average is 40.3% this year. So anybody, any school that's above that, at that point or, or higher will receive Title I allocations. And last February, ODE audited our federal programs and we were found to be in compliance. They finished that in August and we're found to be in compliance with the Elementary Ed, Elementary Secondary Education Act. Any questions about Title I? It's a lot of the same stuff I come with you, to you each year. Strategic Vision Plan, I think I'm the first person to report on my portion, is that correct? Thank you.
Yeah, you are.
So if I don't give you enough information, and it's not a good time of the year to give a lot of information because we're just kicking this off, but... So I am under the goal of 100% of teachers will meet or exceed the district standard for student engagement. Linda Myers has overall oversight, but I, my portion is under student enthusiasm, interest, thinking, problem solving, et cetera. And in the plan, there are a few implementation, strategies for implementation may include. Teachers receive training on the Danielson Framework, which included student engagement instruction. Last Friday, each teacher will be doing a self-evaluation, so we'll get some data from that. And then the principals will be working with each teacher around their self-evaluation and professional goals. And then principals soon will be starting to go into classrooms and collecting evidence relative to the Danielson Framework, but also specifically to student engagement. And there will be much more data to report and many more things to report on when I come back in May around my portion. And there will be much more data to report and, and many more things to report on when I come back in May around my portion. And I'm sure you'll hear from everybody else that's, that's listed. Uh, Central Howell was rated a four on their most recent state report card. We were at five last year, but we did not, uh, do as well with our subgroup of economically disadvantaged in the area of math. However, overall, we improved in reading and math, just not in our specific subgroup. We're at 171 students. It's about where we were last year. We only took transfers at kindergarten. Uh, we have 24 kindergarten students. That's what we capped it at. Nine of them are Pratom transfers, but only two of those kids actually live in the Pratom area. Uh, our free and reduced meal count is 20.81, so it's pretty low compared to the 40% for district average. We have small number of ELL students and, um, and students that are on IEPs. And our September attendance was, 80% of our students had 95% or better attendance. So that's relative to our new district goal. And I've been, um, putting information on our website and also talking about our attendance goal. And I sent home a two-page flyer about our attendance goal and our efforts to try to phase in 95% attendance in the next five years. So we're trying to get people on board with that, asking them to reschedule things, schedule things for after-school, all the days of school that were out, such as last Friday for dentist appointments, doctor appointments, because sickness and, and medical appointments about the main reason that Student Smith School at, uh, Central Howell. Our parent club, with a little help from the school, paid to have water filters installed in all of our drinking fountains. So our, our fountains have always had safe water to drink, but the, uh, the metallic taste and smell just didn't make it very, um, very attractive to the kids. So Mark Stadley of Stadley Water Systems came in and the parent club paid him to install those filters. So that's really nice for the entire school. Uh, there's a little bit of, uh, filter replacement each year, but the parent club is budgeting for that as well. Uh, and they made $10,400 in profits at Oktoberfest by selling nutritious, fried winkies and Oreos. We finally have our library collection software and hardware in place. The laptop is in my office right now. So now we begin entering books. It's been a long time trying to get this whole thing in place, but it finally happened. We offer after-school band with Tim Duffy on, um, Thursdays. And I think we have about eight to 10 kids attending after-school band. And their parents, some of their parents just come in and they sit in the bleachers and listen and watch what's going on. And he does a great job. We're ending the, nearing the end of volleyball season and, um, girls' basketball will be starting at the end of October, the last week of October. Last year, we did Jog Across America at Central Howell for going from New York City or Central Howell to New York City. This year, we're going to do the Oregon Trail Run, so we're gonna start in Missouri and follow the, the path to Oregon. Uh, soon we'll be doing our annual bullying survey. Uh, any student that needs, uh, extra intervention in reading or math or both, we have the staffing right now to be able to do that. And so those kids are getting extra help, um, first through eighth grade. Uh, special education students are being pulled out for services. ELL students receive their services in the afternoon. And, uh, we continue to use Accelerated Reader and so far, students have read and passed tests on 427 books just a few weeks into the school year. Questions about Central Howell? Okay. Pratom School, we have 73 students in grades one through eight. We have the usual configuration of one, two, three to five, six to eight. Um, Pratom's free and reduced percentage is 21.92, so it's a little bit higher than Central Howell's. We have very active, uh, parent club and pretty much any reasonable request, they will, uh, they will fund. So, which is really nice for the school because the school doesn't have the ability to get a lot of the extras. So that's very, very, uh, we're very grateful to our parent club for, uh, being available to us like that. Pratom's September attendance rate, 91% of Pratom students had 95% attendance or better. And Pratom is a very small school, as you know, but the staff and students make it work every day. And they were rated as a four last year, but this, uh, in the most recent year, 13, 14, report card, they earned a level five. So they showed a little improvement and got to that top level. Uh, they are, and we are enjoying a successful volleyball season, although we did lose one of our leaders to an injury. Basketball, again, will start at the end of October. ELL, or remind you, ELL students from Pratom go to Central Howell for their services each afternoon. And, uh, we regularly, at both schools, use One Call Now, the website, sending things home. So we try to make sure that our parents are very informed of what's going on regularly. Any questions about Pratom? Any questions at all?
The ELL that goes to Central Howell, how's that handled? Do you, is there a bus transportation or how's, how's, how do you get kids there and back?
They get out at 2:05 and they get on a bus and they come, uh, to Central Howell. And, uh, they go to the library and meet with our halftime ELL teacher who serves Central Howell as well. And it works very, very easy. The unfortunate side is those kids end up going to school a longer day, but most of them are going home by three that are picked up by their parents. So it just works, it works really smoothly.
Sounds good.
Yeah. And their day is a little bit shorter just because of the busing. Pratom's, uh, day is shorter than Central Howell's. So it's all within the Central Howell school day. It's not a problem.
Good, okay. Other questions?
Thank you, Dustin.
Thanks.
Marilyn Ann and Scott Smills, homeless program.
Good evening. Unlike Scott, I'm not going to, uh, take responsibility for the internet being down.
Thanks for a bow.
I couldn't access what I needed when the internet went down this weekend. So what you have there on the front, um, is our enrollment at Scott Smills. It's up a bit this year, um, from last year. We've done, we did a little bit of reconfiguration. Last year, we had a one, two class. Our third and fourth, we had a three, four, and four, five last year. And this year, we have a straight one because we had so many first graders coming out of the kindergarten class last year. And so then we have all of our second and third graders together in one class and all of our fourth and fifth graders together in one class. We are about to increase our enrollment by four students. They are enrolled, haven't started yet, but students that are moving into Scott Smills from one family from Alaska, one family from Colton. Let's see.
Marilyn, did, did the kindergartners from last year that came for full-day kindergarten, did they tend to stay at Scott Smills?
Some of them did. Seven, seven of our 19 students in first grade were with us in kindergarten last year on transfer. Were with us on transferring kindergarten last year. There are a few new first graders. Some of them moved in, some of them are on transfer that were not with us last year, but have transferred in this year. We have, of the 24 that are in kindergarten right now, 13 of those are transfer students. And if you look down at the bottom, or almost at the bottom, where it says student population, it breaks out, um, our transfers. So currently of the 147 kids, 99 of those who are those who live in Scott Smills in our residential area. And the rest are on transfer. 35 of those are from within the district, either between Monitor and the other schools. And eight of those are from out of the district. Nanangel, Salem Kaiser, and Malala River are where our out-of-district transfers are from. Any other questions about enrollment? Okay. Um, then I've just listed our staff. It's predominantly what we've had from the past, but we do have, um, we have a new teacher, Randall Brown. It's halftime. One of our, our sixth and seventh grade teacher resigned to take a position in, um, Beaverton, at a school in Beaverton. And so we did some reshuffling. We moved Michelle Stadley up from a primary classroom into the middle school classroom. And then we hired Randall to come in and be a math and science specialist. And then we moved Leah Lawton, who was our math specialist last year, and our ELD teacher last year. We moved her into the two, three class that Michelle Stadley had been in. And so Liz Lombard, who was our Title One only teacher last year, has taken over part of our ELD. And we have one group of ELD students that are bused every morning over to Butte Creek and they do, they get their ELD instruction at Butte Creek from the teacher there. Liz does the other two groups, the younger students, the kindergarten and first graders. Excuse me, the other one group. Let's see. We have on our classified staff, one new assistant, Robert McEwen, who joined us. We, we lost Diane Bates, who was our special needs assistant, and so we moved Cory Hagler into the special needs assistant position. And then we hired Robert to come in. He's been a great addition to our staff. We've been a predominantly female staff. And our custodian was, was really thrilled that we not only hired Randall, but Robert this year. So he was not the only male on staff. Let's see. And then at the very bottom of that page, I talk about the progress toward our district goals. It's early in the year, as Dustin was alluding to, and so it's hard to have a lot of data on this yet. For example, on the goal about, um, students, K-12 students being on target to graduate. What I used for that was on, on grade level in math and on grade level in reading, based on OAKS scores. We'll have to figure out something else for the rest of the year to figure out what exactly on-grade level means. But for purposes of tonight, 60% of our students who tested last year on OAKS met or exceeded in math. 72% of our students met or exceeded OAKS in reading. Now, those scores certainly have room for improvement, but we've been making tremendous growth. And so on our state report card this year, we were scored a level four overall. That's the highest we've been. But we were, we were scored a level five for growth, both for all of our students and for our subgroups. So that's a tremendous, um, achievement on the part of our staff for the amount of growth that our students have been making. On the, attending 95% or more of school days, for the, from the first of the school year until today, 67% of our students have attended 95% or more. Last year, we were, I, I wanna say 35% of our students met that mark. So it's better than last year. We're hoping it'll go higher.
What's the main reasons?
Lots of, I mean, there are lots of reasons, a lot of, um, a lot of illness, a lot of hunting. We had somebody just come back from a 10-day hunting trip. Some vacations, you know, just lots and lots of reasons. On the next page, our fundraising golf tournament. I've talked about this several times in it. Our two seniors, Dustin Meyer and Kiara Hagler, who are doing this, had originally scheduled it for last spring and then postponed it. So it has now been rescheduled for November 1st. I would like to invite all of you to attend. The information on signing up is on this page. It's going to be at Evergreen Golf Course, uh, four-person scramble, best ball, starting at 9:30 a.m. It's a $50 entry fee per person, but we are encouraging, encouraging people to get pledges and donations. And so for anybody who brings in $100 in donations, we waive the entry fee. So, uh, you're all encouraged to, to join us. There's, um, sign of information, contact information for both Dustin and Kiara on the paper here. Okay, and then I'm going to report on the district goal. And I realize that Dustin was the first one to report, but you know, if Andy had scheduled principals in alphabetical order, I would've been the first one to report. So the goal that I'm working on is a, a sub-goal. The kindergarten and first grade students will not miss more than five days of school in a school year, which equates to 97% or better attendance. It's a really high mark. But it's based on, um, a considerable amount of research that, that indicates how important attendance is in the first two years of school. And that if, if students are in attendance, 97% or higher within those first two years, it carries on, their achievement carries on for a long time forward. It takes a really ti- long time to overcome, um, high absenteeism in those eight, in those grades. And so, um, I was able to get some of the, of the research documents that Jim Abbott used with us. He sent those to me today. I haven't had to read, time to read them yet. But I'm, I'm planning to go through those and do some summaries and get some information out for principals to share with kindergarten and first grade parents because I think it's a hard sell sometimes for kindergarten and first grade parents. They're like, kindergarten is just play. Why do you have to be there? But I think what, you know, what I can certainly share from having had our all-day kindergarten program last year is what a tremendous difference we saw last year in the, in the amount of achievement that kids did by being in school twice as long in the same year, by, by being there twice as long. And I've been a proponent of all-day kindergarten for a long time. I was a kindergarten teacher for many years and my master's degree is in early childhood ed. So I've been a proponent of all-day kinder for a long time, but even I was surprised at how much growth students made. And I think another big surprise this fall was when we segued our first grade teacher was doing her, um, first week, her beginning of the school year assessment. She was just amazed at how far the kids were, how, how far along they were, so much further along than what she typically assesses at the beginning of the school year. And so I heard her really praising the accolades of the all-day kindergarten program to Sarah. She hadn't said a lot about it last year, but when she got the kids this year and saw how far along they were. And so I think that equates to kindergarten attendance. If we see how much difference it makes for kids to be in school twice as much, well, if they're absent from school, you can see how much they're missing. So much of what's done in kindergarten is hands-on and it's really hard to replicate that if you're not at school. If you're not there, you, you can't make it up. And so it's real important for our students to be in school. So let's take a look at the data here. Sandy Sprauer got this for me. And the A, B, C, D, these across the top are our schools. I chose not to put names on there because I think it's just a little bit early in the data collection process to put names on there. So you can see the first set of numbers is from 2013, 14. And it equates to 40% overall between kindergarten and first grade across the district. 40% of our K-1 students met the goal of five days or fewer absence. And then the numbers at the bottom, you can't go by five days or fewer when it's early in the school year. So I just did the math. It's 97%. So these are 97% or better, the numbers at the bottom, to date. From the beginning of the year until today, those students with 97% or better are on track to have five or fewer days absent for the year. So you can see the numbers there, kindergarten and first grade. Any questions about that?
So Marilyn, so the, the top group averages out to 40%. The bottom group averages out to what?
Well, I don't know because, um, it's not a straight math problem when you have them broken apart by eight, by grades.
Okay.
I don't know the total numbers, the denominator, numerator, to be able to do that number. But I can figure that out for you if you want.
Is a lot of that just being done, like, through teachers, really encouraging parents to get their kids there?
Well, I think every school has been doing, has been, has been talking to parents. I know I sent letters out to all of our parents in June that gave the percent of each of their children, their percent of attendance for last year and told them that we were working on attendance and asked them to work with their child to set a target this year that was higher than last year. Not that they could make the 95% rate if they were at 40% last year, but that they could move up. Maybe they could get to 85%. And so, and I know that all of the other principals have been doing something similar. So I think there's been quite an emphasis on enrollment or on attendance this year. It could also be that it's early in the year too, and so these might be artificial numbers. I don't know. I never have looked at attendance across the year that closely.
You know, a lot of cases, parents need to buy into it and really, really understand and that attendance is, is important and understand why and, and buy into that. So it sounds like you got a lot of work to do on that.
Yeah, I think we all do, but I think it's, it's worth doing. Being in school is important.
Yeah.
And even, I mean, it used to be more so that in primary classrooms, everything was hands-on. It was hard to replicate. But we're seeing that with our emphasis on student engagement more and more and more across all grade levels, K-12. It's hands-on and it's not stuff you can do outside of being there in the class and doing it with everybody.
Have you guys done any brainstorming for, um, strategies for, um, a chronically absent child? You know, what do you, what do you do with the, with the kid? You know, kids don't wanna go to school and the parents don't make them. You know, what do you, how do you?
Well, which partly it's incentivizing being at school, although that's a, that's a slippery slope because there are people who say, "Well, you can't, you can't punish a kid for not being at school if their parents aren't giving them to school." But, but I know from my own children how often it's like, "I don't wanna go to school." I'm sorry, they have a lot of control over whether or not they get to school.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, what I guess what I'm saying is, is it isn't the kids' fault, it's the parents. And how do we?
Yeah, sometimes, but sometimes it is the kids too. So I think we, there are lots of things to work on, one of, one of which is, um, I mean, I can remember talking with a child about, "You need an alarm." It's like put it across the room, so you have to get out of bed and walk over there and turn it off. And, you know, there, there are just, there are strategies. I don't think we're good at it yet. We're figuring it out, though. I think we're all kind of sharing ideas amongst each other about what to do.
Yeah, to get these, to, to hit these goals, it's, it's going to be reaching those problems, maybe problem parents, you know, so reaching them.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to tell you, you created some buzz amongst the parents because I've heard from probably at least a half a dozen parents about how the district is really emphasizing attendance and can't do the orthodontist appointment that day because the teacher really wants the kid there. So, I think, I think, you know, you're already making some headway.
Yeah, it's important.
Other questions? Thank you, Marilyn.
I don't have anything on here about the homeless program, but if you have questions, I'll answer them.
What's the, what's the homeless number going up or down?
Down, I think, but you know, it's too early in the year to know.
True.
They were down last year for the second year in a row.
It's also a sign of an improving economy, too.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thanks, Marilyn.
Thanks.
Moving on, board reports. Does anybody have anything to report tonight? No? Correspondents? There was a letter at our stations from Connie Hinsdale. Is there anything else, Andy? I don't have, seen anything. Okay, second audience with visitors. Would anyone like to take a minute to address the board? Okay. We have no action items, so we're going to take about a five-minute break and then we'll move into executive session under ORS 192660, Cicely Bank Request. Thank you for coming, everyone.